We have one up downstairs.
Oh, we do? Okay, I guess I just haven't seen it.
I haven't either, obviously. I come up the elevator.
Thank you so much, Ms. Marshall. That was an excellent report. The next agenda item is Agenda Item 5, and that's further discussion regarding the Housing Authority Board appointment. And I think Mr. Aker and perhaps Mr. Downs may have some information to share with us.
No, please. Well, my understanding is council has several names that you want to consider for the Housing Board appointment. And part of this discussion is to kind of determine how do you want to go about appointing that person? Because I think there's interpretation that it's the mayor's appointment, but can council confirm that appointment or not? And how do you want to do that? So, as I mentioned last, at the last meeting, we had this discussion. It's really kind of council's per view on exactly how do they want to finalize it. The mayor can make your recommendations. The mayor could actually say, "I would like to have council, you know, confirm the appointment" as well. So, I wanted to open it up for discussion on council members. Mr. Downs, if you have any questions regarding what you can and cannot do from the state statutes.
Okay. Any comments from council?
I just have to say, as that, call me old-fashioned or whatever, but I believe since I've been on council that it was the mayor's priority to set this appointment. And I think that we should just stick with that way. I mean, that's my feeling as far as, I think that we should agree, well, if the mayor makes the decision, whoever she appoints, I think that should be the decision. I don't believe that, like I say, in the old days or whatever, I was on council, that's the way we did it, and I hate to see it change like that. This council, I have been together.
And what do the statutes provide?
I will tell you, it is my understanding, and Councilman Bono, I understand that that is how it has been done in the past. It is my understanding, however, that 294205 CRS subsection, it would be subsection 3C, provides that council confirms the mayoral appointment. And you had asked me to look into that at one of prior council meetings. And, you know, Ms. Garrett, very nice, and I always want to give credit where credit is due, Ms. Garrett was kind of assisting me in finding this kind of statutory scheme, this framework. And anyway, it is 294205 that talks about the appointment of commissioners for the local housing authorities. And if I may, that the paragraph I just cited, subsection C, says, "Until such times the council takes action pursuant to subsection 6 of this section, all appointments of commissioners appointed pursuant to this subsection 3 shall be conditioned upon confirmation by the council as required by 294204." And it basically says that the mayor makes the appointments and council confirms. And so, with respect to how it's been done in the past, I think the correct thing to do is to have the mayor make the appointment and then council confirm.
And the reason I brought this forward is I just wanted to be sure that we were doing everything appropriately. I know when the housing authority first implemented the commissions, and it seems like the practice has been just basically for the mayor to appoint somebody, and I was concerned that there may not have been sufficient involvement or information shared with the rest of council. And I just wanted to be sure that if we do it, we do it correctly. As things now stand, I've had three individuals express interest in the vacant position. And those individuals are Ms. Veltre, who's in the past has actually endorsed the Trinidad Housing Authority. Mr. Mickey Grego has also submitted a letter of interest, and at one time he did serve on city council, and I don't recall, was he mayor at a point in time or just on council?
He was mayor.
He was mayor.
He was, he was, yeah. I kind of thought he had been mayor for a period of time back, I think maybe in the eighties or seventies, something like that.
Early eighties.
Early eighties, okay. And then the third individual is our retired Judge Nuna, who has expressed interest in the position. I would like to see, since the appropriate thing would be the appointment and then action by council, that we do that at the next meeting where we do have action agenda items. And I will tell you, at this point in time, I'm inclined to recommend the appointment of Ms. Veltre. And I think her experience, those years in actually running the housing authority, stand her in very good stead to be able to do a superb job as a commissioner. So, I did want to share that with you. And I guess probably the next step would be to put it on the agenda for maybe the 29th? No, we have special meeting the 29th.
February 5th.
February 5th. Would that be acceptable with everybody? Okay, so let's shoot for the 5th. And I really would like to have that accomplished. I've been taking this issue under advisement for far too long, and I believe there is some planned training for whoever the commissioner, he or she might be. And I certainly don't want to delay it beyond that time so that they can participate in the training. Are there any questions?
And this term, and this term is to fill Mr. Sayer's term, right?
Yes.
And could you kind of give me a reminder there, what, how long, how much time did Mr. Sayer have to go on that board before his term?
Actually, Harry served as attorney for the initial board in the sixties, and has been active ever since until his passing.
So, is that like a two-year term?
Oh, his term, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the question. I believe Harry has three more, had three more years on his term.
So, his on expired term would be three years. And then I believe an additional commissioner is coming up for reappointment, perhaps in July of this year?
For appointment.
Yeah. And so, you know, as soon as we fill the commission share created by the unfortunate demise of Mr. Sayer, then come the summer, we will be asked to reappoint. And I'm not sure which commissioner it is. Is it Ms. George, perhaps, who's coming up?
It is.
Okay. Marie George has been on the commission. And so, anyhow, that's just kind of where we're at. And Mr. Downs, thank you for doing that research.
My pleasure.
I just want to make sure that we're as transparent as possible and that we're doing everything according to the roadblock.
Absolutely. And it is interesting that it had not been done that way in the past. I mean, I, you know, I, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Any other comments or questions, Harry? All right. The next agenda item is a real good one. We're going to hear an update on the routing of the Southwest Chief Passenger Rail Service. And Mr. Aker, you're the man of the hour and going to inform us about this. And I'm taking notes.
I shared this with Councilmember Vulcan because she was also on the trip, so if she's got anything to add. And really, I think what we wanted to do this time was, one, you've had a chance, hopefully, to take a look at some of the materials. And really wanted to kind of open it up for some, if you've got any specific questions or other things that you, as city council, would like us to inquire about as we continue moving forward. Included with the information was an email from the lobbyist firm Jeff Searle of Alston and Berg out of Washington, DC. He was on the trip. He identified some of the next steps from his standpoint in preparation of potential even a group trip from some of the representatives back to Washington, DC sometime in March. I think I had mentioned in our trip about potential for NLC, National League of Cities, is in March. Sounds like they're trying to target sometime after that time, so it may not be, but they should be able to combine trips. And some groups do want to target after some of those meetings because you can concentrate because during the weeks that both the counties and the cities are in Washington, DC, all the legislative staff is really, really busy with meetings, with everyone in the country. But it's also our opportunity, if we want to go or we can give suggestions on, surely we can talk to some of the cabinet members as well and some of the directors to try and get the message out there as well. He suggested in his email that a couple of, two points to really concentrate on is come up with a common language of what we can present to the legislative bodies and give a report on, so that we're all unified when we're talking about it. So, we're going to work on that. And then also identify, is there any other areas of funding? Amtrak and BNSF are both saying they really want to commit to staying online. They, we talked a little bit about the alternative. That is expensive as well because they'd have to build stations if they wanted to take it through a different route. However, they're-
And a different route would be real ugly.
Yeah.
And wouldn't be, nor is it.
Right. And I think everyone is kind of waiting on Burlington Northern and Amtrak to give us a little bit more details on exactly what they're looking at, as things that need to be repaired. We got to experience some of the areas that they say need to be repaired, but what exactly would they be doing to repair those areas and what would the exact cost be? Or at least to identify a range of costs so that we can have a little bit more details as we're trying to get creative to help them find some funding. Their initial thought and the model here was to, you know, split it five ways, you know, the three states, Burlington Northern, Amtrak. I don't know how viable that is, issues continuing to have discussions. States have got funding issues as much as the federal government does. A lot of concern, I think, is with the transportation bill. Is there going to be some funding for Amtrak and continued Amtrak? And as a side note, I have a friend that I had met through the National Western. Her husband is consulting to Colorado CDOT, and so trying to find some funding, separate funding as well. So, he's going to try to connect with them within the next couple of weeks as he gets more information to tell me what is going on at the state.
Has the issue with New Mexico gotten straightened up with the governor?
I would say no.
It is kind of, it's a little sprang, it's a lot of that.
And it's, I don't think it has been. If they were noticeably absent on the trip.
No attendees.
No attendees at all. So, that's key. However, I talked to some other folks who said, you know, in other areas of the state, they are concentrating on railroad. So, I don't know, I don't have as much education to find a little bit more exactly what's going on in this part of the state and her feelings on, on the railroad. You know, there was some thought, what happens in discussion on, you know, if one state doesn't participate, what happens? Does it all go away? I don't think that's, I think there's ways to work with that, especially if both Colorado and Kansas really think that this is viable, you know, maybe there's ways that we pitch in to make sure things do happen in New Mexico. I think there's a whole row of possibilities out there. So, but I wanted to open it up to council as far as if there are other thoughts, other information that you'd like me to find out in regards to this as we continue moving forward.
Excuse me, I have a question. 2016 isn't that far away anymore.
I agree.
It's three years. And at one point, it seemed, oh, we have plenty of time to do this. And I know, and I know from friends of mine that are in the railroad industry, that it just takes forever. And I'm just curious, first question is, who's driving the process here? Number two, what are sort of the important milestone dates that will lead? Is someone developing a set of milestones that will lead to a resolution in 2016 or by, ultimately, before 2016?
Those are good questions that I don't think I can answer at this time, but good things to find out as far as-
What was the question?
It's a two-part question, Harry. One is, 2016 is coming up quicker than we thought at one point.
She can't hear you. Come up to the podium, Mr. Sayer, sir.
No, it's just-
I think I wasn't close enough to say this much.
All right, thank you.
2016 is coming up a lot more quickly than it was two years ago. And my knowledge of, you know, just from friends who've been in the business at fairly high levels, that things move, especially in these sorts of decisions, at a glacial speed, and nothing's going to hurry, hurry them up. It's kind of like pushing a string. And so, my question is, given the fact that we're three years away from, you know, this needing to resolve, perhaps two and a half years, who is driving the process? And what are the critical milestones that need to be achieved in order to comfortably achieve both the capital commitment and the operating cost commitments before 2016?
If I may, to make it even more critical, the railroad is asking for commitments for funding by 2014. And if they don't have it, they still will run through 2016. As far as these milestones, from what was presented to us, it appeared like any milestones plus the dollar amounts, just keep flip-flopping. And during a portion of the meeting, Mr. Searle was very, not really demanding, but very hard set on, we need exact figures. We need to be able to proceed with, with trying to acquire grant funding. We cannot do it until you provide us the figures. They did agree to finally provide that. But things really have been flip-flopping a lot from, from what we observed.
So, it's really 2004, by the next year, we-
They're asking for commitments by 2014.
And I think those of us who are in attendance are questioning, are those real hard set dates as well? Are they just trying to force the issues with some of the unknowns so that they can continue their planning? And that's Amtrak in the past. I mean, BNSF, Amtrak needs it from the speed standpoint so they can, you know, keep their time schedules and things of that nature. Whereas Burlington Northern is saying they can run slower if they have to, is what they're saying. But if you're from a business standpoint, I don't know if, you know, businesses are going to want to, you know, delay, you know, freight going back and forth as well. So, I think that may come to play into the future as well.
And they also elaborated on the fact that the freight that they run between these certain areas is very nominal.
That's what I was trying to add. Mr. Shue?
Yeah, they, and the two, the two worst areas are, our area here from Trinidad to Raton and from Las Vegas to Santa Fe are the worst areas where they, and New Mexico does very little, more, little freight whatsoever anymore since they rerouted their trains. So, are, are there, there are issues just to do maybe one area at a time to get repaired to, has anybody ever brought up any of that?
That was discussed a little bit in, in the meeting as well, as far as can you phase it? Are there ways with, you know, tackle the worst areas first? And they didn't seem to be as receptive about that from the BNSF standpoint. There, you think about, can they lower costs by recycling some of the rail? And some rail can be recycled, some rail can't be recycled at all, it depends on how it was made. Because there are areas between Trinidad and La Jolla that were pretty bad as well, that they said were bad areas, areas in Kansas. So, there are spots where it's good, spots where it's not good.
There were spots along, along the run from Topeka through La Jolla then, and sometimes the train could only go 29. Is that the lowest amount that we saw?
Where they'd like to be going 69 or 70?
And Carol, Tom, who would you say is the champion of this issue? I mean, we're the most affected by it, the municipality, but we have no clue. Burlington Northern and Amtrak don't have that much of an issue to resolve the differences. Who's going to break that Gordian knot, do you think? Considering we have a year to three years left.
I think it's got to be collectively the municipalities that are impacted in the state DOTs.
The Southwest Coalition and the DOT.
And I would say with the city manager in La Jolla, Rick, and with the Garden City city manager, I think those are the two that are going to be.
Do that, I mean, this, terrific phrases, that seem to be coalescing group?
Right.
Very much, very much. And Mr. Klein was particularly spearheading a lot of things, and council might recall that he came and spoke with us early last year about this very issue.
Right. And they were pleased that we had some good representation from Trinidad on the train. It was, it was kind of disappointing that Kansas brought a big contingency from the state DOT. Colorado sent a relatively junior person on the multimodal staff, didn't, you know, send some higher-up folks. I think we also have to talk to the folks that CDOT here to say, you guys really need to be paying attention to this.
Well, Kansas had representatives from their actual secretary of transportation to representatives for the various senators.
Well, that's a lot, a lot of state, perhaps, you know.
That's because we're in the lower end of the state.
It's because, just because we're down here. But if we lose this, this route down here, we'll never see a route that connects Trinidad to Denver.
Well, relatively, a lot of state, yeah. But I'm saying getting the, the dollar amounts, that's against the, against the absolute dollars. Well, thanks for that, I think.
So, we'll continue to pursue this, and as I get some additional information from my acquaintances as far as what he's hearing as well. He's a consultant back to CDOT, used to work for CDOT in the past, so I'll share that with you.
Mr. Aker, is it correct that the packet items numbered 6 through 618 are available to the public?
Yeah, if they would like a copy.
Okay.
It's actually on the website.
Okay, very good.
It should be posted as part of the, of the packet information on the website.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure that our friends in the media have an opportunity to see what it is that council has looked at. And I believe Mr. Sayer's had raised his hand. Do you have questions, sir?
The advocate said they wanted silly people. And we need to make noise because Amtrak is all, the Amtrak world is all excited because California's going ahead with high-speed rail. So, that's where their focus is going to be, you know, for the near future. They're all excited about that, as our nation should be. A couple of things that I think that we could do right away is that the, we now have a different congressman for this particular district, Cory Gardner. And he's not particularly infrastructure-friendly in terms of his past votes, since he just took office in January. Any of the resolutions that the councils have passed along the route, I think should be resubmitted to him. CC, the two U.S. senators, Udall and Bennett are both Amtrak friendly, but Gardner will be involved in the votes early on in the budgeting in the House. And so, I think we need immediately to put some pressure on Gardner from the city, redo our city's resolution, get La Jolla, get Rick, Rick Klein to resubmit his to Gardner. Let's make a lot of noise and put pressure right back on the people that are going to be dealing with it, A. B, let's get the, I would think we have some newspaper folks here today. Let's give them the information that you were given, those summary sheets, so that they can build a story for the local community. And at the end of the story, if the newspaper people are here listening, encourage the local citizens who like the train and who use it to write to their congressman. Give them the address, you know, where to write, and encourage, the more noise that we can make, the better chance that we have. When I talked, last year, I got involved in a, a call-in to the Department of Transportation in Washington, and actually, I was the first person that got through. It was just a crapshoot. But the woman that I spoke with, who was really in the high echelon, said, you know, they didn't even have our section on the budget discussions. And when we're talking 100 million, she said that there was $20 billion allocated for $80 billion in requests. So, we need to make a lot of noise. There are other people in Colorado that even though they're up north, are excited and will help us with this issue. Subi and some of the other folks will make noise for us if we reach out to them. I'll do that. I think we should time it around the same time. If you decide to resubmit the, submit the, the resolution to Gardner, around the same time, I'll try to get Subi and the other Colorado train people to start putting pressure. If Colorado loses, so there still are forces in Congress that want to stop the national train system because they want to sell off the Northeast Corridor to Wall Street. With the current election, no matter which way you go on it, we still have Amtrak Joe, which is what the employees call Biden because he's taken the train to work for years. So, that's in our favor, but that doesn't help us with the local issue. So, we, we need to jump up and down and make some fresh noise with the fresh vote from this area, so.
One other thing you have to consider is with that storm that came ashore in the New York, New Jersey area. It caused substantial damage to the Amtrak's ashore in the New York, New Jersey area. It caused substantial damage to the Amtrak service running on the East Coast. So, they're going to be clamoring for some of those limited dollars.
Well, they are. In the, in the bill that was finally passed after Governor Christie jumped up and down and said, "Hey, we've sent money to the rest of the country, what are you guys doing?" Amtrak, just the damage for Amtrak was 326 million, just to get things back to the way they were, not improvements. And they only, in that, in that bill, they only got something like half of that or 60% of that. I mean, it's better than nothing because there were forces that tried to get, make it nothing, the forces that want to kill the train. So, the reason the northern folks will not listen to our battle is they know about the attempt to shut down the Pross country trains, and there are nine stops in Colorado. So, combine the three in southern Colorado with the six in northern Colorado on the Zephyr, and you've got an economic impact to the state. And we do have friendly voices, they just all need to be coordinated right now into a chorus. Because as I say, the focus for our folks will be elsewhere. I've got, I have an email into the Boy Scout place in northern New Mexico.
Elma.
And I'm trying to get numbers for how many Boy Scouts go on that, and I'm trying to direct a coordinated thing with them with our resolutions and that as a package to, I know this sounds ridiculous, but what have we got to lose? I'm trying to funnel that to the desk of Warren Buffett because in my addiction to newspapers, I read last year, the 2011, the biggest profit-making section of his financial world, which is extensive, was from BSNF. So, I'm working backdoor on that type of thing. The assistants to both of our U.S. senators have said that they would help me try to get that put on his desk because it's hard to get through all of the blockers that they have. But in the meantime, if we work on the rest of this, that's all we can do, you know, is make some noise.
You know, one of the question, you know, another, we, and all this stuff that we've been talking about, have we ever got with Raton? I mean, they have a big issue here because about 80% of the scouts get on the train at Raton to Elma for some reason.
And they estimate that there are 22,000 Boy Scouts who have-
And I don't know if we've ever got with Raton and talked to them about joining in with us and that, because they have a big economical-
I believe, Brett, they reached out to Raton, they also reached out and had a discussion with the Boy Scouts. They had a conflict, but they are, they have been trying to reach out to Raton. I have not done it, I don't know if the city has.
No, I don't think we ever had, but that might be-
But the group has been reaching out to Raton as well.
I was contacted by a commissioner from Colfax County, and I believe I shared that information with you, that they're very much interested in these issues. So, perhaps Mr. Aker can communicate with that commissioner, and we can begin to see some coordination, at least with Colfax County and the rest of the folks in Colorado. Ms. Miles had suggested maybe this is an area where council should consider forming a standing committee to work on this issue. So, I'd just throw that out there.
Yeah, it just seems to me that a lot of sort of important relationships are being formed right now, and a lot of great work is done on this trip. Is it worth kind of, I mean, Terry, you have a lot to offer here as well. Is it worth having a standing committee that sort of de-tragically?
You sure could. I mean, that would-
Not only would be beneficial.
That would allow, a good way for Terry to have his input into this discussion. And I think it would allow council to actually focus on it as well at, at specific meetings. So, I think that would be-
Yeah, we've all got our fingers in so many plots that this is a way of reminding us of the pot. It's so important.
Mr. Aker, typically in the past, when you've had a city council involved in a standing committee, how was that structured? Was it like two, three? I imagine two council members to avoid, avoid a quorum and then-
My, my experience has been typically two council members, and then you can invite citizens or you can appoint citizens. And it's actually been a process that in my past experience, every time you had an election, you would actually be- election, you would actually renew those standing committees. But the committees can also have a short lifespan, you know, and focus, because there's no reason to keep a committee if there's no work for that committee. So I think council could select them on themselves, who they'd like to have on the committee. We've already got one citizen that I would think has an interest.
So what about you, Mr. Aker, is it involve networking with the other city managers?
Yes, and I would probably be involved in it, and then as needed, I could pull another staff as well.
I think Terry or Mr. Patrick would be good too because of the tourism and to bring them in. Carol, she's already a trained veteran.
I think we haven't been there.
Is there, just for exploration, any interest by any other member of council? Mr. Bonato or Ms. Velazquez?
Whatever the city wants me to do and you guys want me to do, I'll do it.
You know, and there's another, and I didn't interrupt that, but there's another point too I'd like to make, is that I think a lot of us should get involved in some of these boards. And, you know, we have a couple of boards and we do have liaisons, and I think there are other boards out there that we need to, and I'm not saying now, but we need to, we need to work on it because I think we can bring back stuff to the council that the boards are doing, and if they need help at the boards, we also have a council person there. So I think a board like this, and later on, as we get it going, I think some of us should really volunteer to take some of the boards, because some of them only meet once a month and stuff like that. And I think that's real important for.
I hope Mr. Bonato had expressed an interest in this very issue. So if we have two council members, I think it would be a perfect opportunity, assuming you're still interested, Mr. Bonato.
Yeah, nothing wrong with that, Mr. Aker.
Great, and I'll put some names together for staff and we'll try to get something set up here soon to get this committee kind of rocking and rolling or on track, so to speak.
There you go.
We have to move relatively quick on and stay on top of.
I just have one question for Mr. Aker. The money that the counties, you know, we gave for Amtrak, I think what was it, $20,000?
That was for the lobbying.
What was it?
No, I think for the lobbying, it was about 20.
I think it was $20,000. All that money, I know that Kansas, you could all those places like that, gave money to support this, this deal. Where did that money go and how does that money represent the cities that gave that money?
My understanding, that money went to the lobbying firm itself. They have not come and asked for any additional funding at this time. That's to help pay for the lobbying staff time and their activities in Washington, D.C.
Austin and Bird LLP.
And we can get kind of an update from who's kind of watching the purse, so to speak, to see where things are at.
That was $20,000.
From us, and I think there was 15 and 20 from a couple of other cities. It was to hire the, that firm as a, it was a retainer.
Right.
Yeah.
As I understood it, yeah. One other thought of Mayor was this council, and I'm sure you're encouraging the city manager to reach out to the county commissioners more than we have.
Oh, absolutely.
Let's get this subject on their focus too. Let's get them making noise too. They did make a resolution, the governor made a resolution, but as I'm saying, we need to renew those and resend them. So let's get the county commissioners involved too.
And I would, I mean, just, Terry, just to let you know, the county administrator and I are meeting bi-weekly, and we're adding a list of things to be on our topic, and this is one of the ones that I want to bring up as well. So that's happening.
Mr. Bonato.
I know, thank you, Anna. I know in the past, dealing with the railroad, it's like Michelle said, it kind of takes their time, and I think this is an important issue that we as a community come together and get people and citizens involved to help us, like established board, like Mr. Schu said, that's a great idea. But we kept to sit on our dust. Now, we got this thing going, so let's just push it and try to do our best to get this Amtrak safe, so it's a good idea, as Mr. Sears said. So all your help and all the citizens' support, and I think as far as writing letters to our senators or whatever, that's going to be a great help.
Mr. Aker, the other thing I would suggest you perhaps look into in this committee that's going to be formed, it seems to me that the standing committee is a wonderful way to address this particular issue and could be a template for addressing others that come before council. But I'd encourage you to look into sharing this with the SET group, which is Stronger Economies Together, and that involves Colfax County, Los Anamos County, and Werfino County. And Ms. Pete Frazier, who's with COG, it plays a critical role in that, and I believe the new county administrator, Ms. Fabik, is also going to be involved with that. So that would be another good resource to look at to build some support for this effort.
I would agree, any of our regional-type committees should be taking a look at this because it impacts us all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
As a final comment, the statistics that were provided for the various states, I'm sure you noticed that Colorado train ridership was down in general, however, the southern part was up over last year. I found it amazing that 4,770 people used during the, in Trinidad. It wasn't what you'd imagined.
I was one of them, so.
Well, thank you very much and Mr. Bonato and Ms. Bolton for agreeing to participate in the standing committee.
Quite happy to.
We appreciate that, and I certainly encourage our friends in the media, since this agenda packet is public information and is available on the website, that you avail yourself of that information so you get a rub of the background about what is occurring. And with that, I believe we've addressed all of the scheduled agenda items. So the next agenda item is seven, which is a discussion of other agenda items. And Mr. Aker, is there anything you or your staff wish to share with council or perhaps suggest that we consider adding for a future agenda?
I've got a couple of ideas, just to give you a layout of what we met right before the work session as staff on some upcoming meetings. I think on January 29th, Ms. Caret would like to bring forward and have some of the board candidates that are outstanding come before council and give their introduction so that those can be appointed at the first meeting in February. That's the only outstanding item that we had for the 29th. On the 12th of February, just to give you kind of a heads up, we're going to have the Economic Development Council come before us, they're also going to be talking with the county that, earlier that day. Also have the Tourism Board update, and so that's three items on that day. And then the next work session, as we discussed earlier, Mr. Downs and I will have a discussion about marijuana, and then we'll also have the.
No sample, Sam. No samples.
Just wanted to clarify. Hey, marijuana conversation.
Oh, it's actually constitutional amendment. Isn't 64 Amendment 64?
Has the state ruled on marijuana tourism yet?
I don't think so.
You want to be on that committee too, Joe.
And I'm going to, I'm going to wager this will be the start of many discussions since the state has not done any official action yet. And then also want to have a discussion on the gas rates. They would like to come before us, the gas provider would like to come for us to talk about the contract and give us an update. So we'll get him scheduled as well.
Yeah, because I think we were looking at possibly getting a longer-term contract to lock in lower rates, that'd be great.
So he was offered to come and have a discussion, he's got some thoughts and ideas, so we'll invite him to come at that time as well.
What date was that?
The 26th of February.
26.
And that's also when we're doing the Amendment 64 marijuana stuff.
Did you mention an agenda for the 12th?
Yes, Economic Development.
Okay, now I understand. Does that mean we're heading to retreat on the 9th then? Because the 9th might be longer.
That's a good point.
Now our retreat.
I don't know, I'll have to check with Anna because has anyone, would you rather have it on the 12th? I haven't heard a definitive.
Tuesday would actually, I know where best for Ms. Velazquez, that's her regular, that's her regular day off, so I think it would be prudent to attempt to accommodate her's work schedule so we can ensure everybody's there.
At what time are we talking about having the retreat? Assuming I'm invited.
We wouldn't.
Trying to force your way into this.
I know you're rather unhappy.
We wouldn't think I'd go anywhere without you.
You're so nice.
We don't have to kiss you goodbye.
Yes, you do.
You started like from nine to noon or eight to noon or whatever, is that what we discussed?
It'll be Tuesday, Tuesday the 12th.
We could.
And Tuesdays off, you know, so I was hoping for a Tuesday.
What we could do is have just the EDC give a brief little update, because I think that would be good as far as maybe a discussion item as a part of the retreat. So maybe we invite Steve to come earlier or at some point during the day, take a break from the retreat, have him do that present of issues. I think it would be good to hear from him on what's going on.
I think that would be.
And then we'll move the Tourism Board update to later on the 26th.
And the time for the retreat, would you suggest we start at?
Tom, why don't you address the issue of the location?
Ms. Miles had suggested we could use her house as a location. We're also checking with the university. It brought to our attention that it might be a little bit small. I haven't seen it, so I haven't put it out. But as far as from a filming standpoint, Mr. Murphy brought up at the last meeting, it might be kind of tight quarters with, you know, he could definitely set up, but the problem is we may actually have camera in our face or the camera. Basically, we focus on an individual, so it's a little bit, could be a little awkward, so.
Could we perhaps consider the Pioneer Room that, or 12 this morning? That was very nice. You felt like you're away from, you know, your typical environment, but it's still here centrally located.
Anna is checking and waiting to hear back from the university on that. I think that's a good viable alternative. Because it's also a little bit spacious and we can break out some.
Great, ask a question, Mr. Murphy, because I really do think the place up there, Tom, you've been to my house, do you think if you perch near the front door that you'd have the panel?
It's not good audio. It's too tight. And if other media want to come, it's just not a room.
Mr. Murphy has indicated the audio would be problematic, and if other media want to come, it would be difficult.
So it sounds like the Pioneer Room, is it all possible?
Sounds like the Pioneer Room. I would suggest like an 8:30 start.
Okay, 8:30, and then I assume we'd have lunch there?
We'll have lunch brought in for councilmen, and I think the only staff I'm anticipating would be probably Mr. Downs if he doesn't get out of this.
He could bring the lunch. That's what you could do.
I just have to do something.
And if we rent till 4:30, 5:00, is that okay?
I'm taking 3:30 or 4:00. My experience is if we try to bring much later, our brains get tired.
Well, how about 8:30 to 4:00?
And then I'll work with the county's schedule on when we can bring the Economic Development and the presentation as a part of that.
And Mr. Aker, are you going to send anything to council, maybe soliciting some of our ideas about topics or issues? Okay, good, that'll be good.
Thanks for offering your home, Councilwoman Wilson.
We'll go have a picnic.
I keep trying to get some show of attention.
The other advantage, another advantage potential is if we have bad weather, we either, we might not be able to get up to it, we might don't, just be able to get back.
You do not want to get snowed in with me anywhere.
On the next work session, we have a, what's our next work session?
The next official work session is the 12th, but I think we can have some items on the 21st.
Then probably on the, the next, yeah, 27th. The next one after that, Mr. Sakamano and Chris Correa addressed me, they want to come before council and talk about some of the stuff at the ballpark, the scoreboard particularly, for advertisement and stuff, so I told them that they would be welcome to come. They weren't going to, probably a work session, so. There's no. Well, they kind of want to do it as soon as possible, but.
I'll get with them.
So I just have them come in and talk to you.
That would be great.
And see if it would be necessary to talk to us, because I don't, I think you can, the issues aren't particular, they just want to talk to about the scoreboard advertisement.
I think it'd be a good idea to direct them, Mr. Aker.
I can talk to Chris and tell him to give you a call to that appointment. It's the alumni association, is what it is.
And in connection with the individuals from Fort Carson who couldn't be here, they weren't sure if the budget issues they're dealing with would be resolved by the 29th, but I'm sure we could work them in at some point in time in February, even if it's a regular board meeting. So what we're doing is putting a big circle around February 12th, and that will be our retreat. And Mr. Aker, we're looking forward to visiting with you and sending some priorities for the city. Any other questions from council? Mr. Bonato.
I don't see Mr. Fernandez here today, and Linda might be downstairs, but maybe Mr. Aker or other councilors question for me is, due to the severe drought that we're in right now and the lack of moisture and going into the first part of February already, we as a city, do we foresee any water restrictions as far as taking place, you know, after May and June going into that spring months, so, you know, to cure our drought, you know? Just a concerning issue that we're so dry, but I want to just remember, try to think about how that ordinance was set up before when we were in our drought situation of the restrictions that are applied, and if those restrictions go, if we don't get no moisture, will they still reapply?
I'll work with Mr. Fernandez to have that discussion, and then if we need to bring it back to council, we'll bring it back to council, probably in the March timeframe.
Thank you, Mr. Bonato, that's a good suggestion. I've had individuals share with me that same concern, Purgatory River, I forget the full name, but their concern is how effective are the enforcement provisions of the city municipal code in the event we really have to buckle down and put some strict measures in place because of the drought? And I think that's something we probably need to also look at, and I'm sure Mr. Downs will assist us in that regard.
Happy to do it.
I know before when we had that real bad, we stripped that drought, when I was on council the first time, we had a lot of people apply by, you know, our citizens really took our water issue really at heart and said, hey, this is really concerning issues. So I don't think as far as, as a community and our citizens are involved in, we're going to have a hard time with them because I think they'll, they'll jump up to the back and see how important this is, but I, to me, I just wanted to make sure that water restrictions are ready. I think we still have it in place that Mr. Fernandez had before, and in case we do, like I said, why do you don't worry right now?
We don't have a water restriction, it's voluntary.
No, there is no.
No, we had a restriction.
It is, no, it's not restrictions.
Yes, it was.
We have to use. Because the police department did check on that this summer.
No, we saw how it was like, no watering between 10 and 4.
Well, yeah, that, that was, right, yeah. That, well, yeah, that's not, that's not really an issue there.
That was actually one of our levels.
Right. Yeah.
So we probably need to become familiar with the requirements, and I believe what Mr. Bonato was proposing is just, we may need to start an education campaign to inform the public that we might have some real tough. campaign to inform the public that we might have some real tough times this coming summer to ensure that they understand that we may have to impose some pretty severe restrictions. Mr. Sears.
The community I worked in had a lot of water problems, and in their case, it wasn't supply, it was that the rates started to skyrocket. And one of the things we did was, we did a PR campaign, we got the local papers involved, but not, not just doing what the enforcement items are, you put that at the bottom of the story. At the beginning of the story, let's get citizens involved in saving Trinidad's water. And encourage the paper to send in or set up a Facebook site or whatever, their own suggestions for saving water. Just in the act of doing it, the ones who do it, and then doing a follow-up story of the suggestions that are sent in, little things add up. Don't leave the water running while, all the time you brush your teeth, you know? Citizens start putting in those little things like that, and together they added up, we actually ended up with a reduction in our bill from usage when the whole community was on it, so.
And we might even consider partnering with the school district, because when I was involved in the education community in Texas, we found that it was very, very effective to educate the youngsters, because the youngsters learned and they took that skill set and those recommended best practices. And they helped educate their own parents, and you saw significant change in behavior.
And those practices were introduced to our children of last year's Water Fest.
Yes, that's the other opportunity for further education. Thank you for reminding us about that. So it looks like we have a pretty full agenda coming up. Are there any comments or suggestions from council?
Just one thing, to make it so, what we're trying to do as staff is do kind of a forward looking on agenda items so that we can have this ready and have these discussions, so that we are trying to be a little bit better in our planning, and so that we can hopefully try to reduce the number of special meetings that councils have. So I'm starting to work with Ms. Garrett and Mr. Downs and Anna on a regular basis and try to map out what we think is coming up in the future.
Great, very good. Anything else, folks? There being no other items for consideration, the work session is concluded at three seventeen PM. We are off the record, and I do want to advise everyone that we do have a very brief special meeting that we will begin shortly. And I'd like to see, do my colleagues, would you like perhaps a ten-minute break before we come back with the ordinance issue? Five is five, good. Give everybody a chance to stand up and stretch. Thank you. I would like to remind everyone to please turn off your cell phones or set your phones to vibrate, and council will please come to order for its special meeting. Welcome, and thank you for taking time from your schedules to attend today's meeting. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the law?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Ms. Garrett, could you conduct the roll call, please?
Bolton?
Present.
Bonato?
Here.
Matek?
Here.
Miles?
Here.
Schu?
Here.
Velazquez?
Here.
Dafy Gonzalez?
Here. For the record, a quorum is present, and council may proceed with business stated in the notice of meeting. Agenda item one A is a public hearing for consideration of an ordinance repealing and reenacting section twelve-twelve of Article Two of Chapter Twelve of the Code of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, for the purpose of restructuring rates for electric service, power, and energy. And council may recall that the first reading occurred at our special meeting on January eighth, twenty thirteen. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I declare the public hearing opening, open, excuse me. And if there are any comments from members of the audience, I would ask that they come forward, identify themselves, and share their input and comments with council at this time. I don't see that we have anybody in the audience who is interested in making a comment or is here to make a comment. Are there any comments from our acting city manager or staff?
I can just reiterate a little bit of what I provided to council as a part of kind of a cover memo. After, between this meeting and the last meeting when this was considered, we had a couple of folks take a look at and check math and check the spreadsheets. Rosie took a look at it, we also, I also enlisted our former utility director, Dave, to take a look at as well, to help me understand some things. And we did find that, that there had been an error in the calculations, that's why you see differences in the rates. We've got it correct now. I actually wanted, I had asked Phil if he could attend, just in case council had some questions. He was actually on his way to the Virgin Islands for vacation, so, sweet guy. But I think we do, we do have them correct, Rosie's comfortable with them, we're covering all of our costs. There is, as I said in my cover memo, a difference with the residential class rate, it's now one point six reduction instead of a one point seven. And then the general service class increased to a two point two reduction from a one point nine. We're still, we're itching close. I guess the goal of what Phil's trying to work with us on is to bring our rates to where all the rates are covering their cost of service, doing that slowly. The residential rates have, my understanding has been, have been subsidized by some of the other rates in the past, we're trying to balance that out. An example of trying to cover our costs is the cost for service, customer service rate going from eight fifty to nine dollars is slowly getting that up to where it should be. Phil says really our cost is about ten fifty for that. So rather than doing that all at once, trying to adjust it slowly over time to create those balances.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council? I'm seeing none. I will declare the hearing closed. And Ms. Garrett, if you will please read the title portion of the ordinance.
And when is we planning to reenact the section twelve dash twelve of Article Two of Chapter Twelve of the Code of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, for the purpose of restructuring rates for electric service, power, and energy?
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the second reading?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schu.
Second.
Second by Ms. Velazquez. Any discussion or questions from council? I believe we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Bonato?
Yes.
Matek?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Dafy Gonzalez?
Yes. Having completed all posted business for the special meeting, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Bolton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bonato. Any discussion? And I believe we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Bonato?
Yes.
Matek?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Dafy Gonzalez?
Yes. And our special meeting is concluded, and thank you to everyone, it's been a long day, but very productive. And I appreciate everything everyone's done.
Are we still on with the tarot?
Yes.
No, we're still on with Garrison, Tanner, and Mark. Is Mr. Hill going to be coming back?
He was when I talked with him. He's concerned he's having an emergency and he's going to take care of it. I also don't know why he's just like this. Asked me to take a look at something.
I was hoping to get a picture right with somebody.
Well, at least we have a couple hours.
Yes.
All right, very good. I'll touch base with you and then we'll figure out.
I'll get you ready.
Thank you.
I don't care.
We should get a car called the Red Tape Mobile.
I'd like the transparents better. Red tape's not a good one. I don't like red tape.